Alrighty. Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Special Municipal Advisory, the Springs Special Municipal. Let me try that again. Welcome to the Special Springs Municipal Advisory Council Meeting on Monday, November 28th at 6:30 PM. We, once in a while, call these special meetings to be able to, when something comes up for us. So we're really grateful to have you all here and grateful to the team for being able to make it on such short notice. Again, always thank you to our interpretation services, Lynn Marie, District One, and Karina from Susan Goran's office. So I'm calling the meeting to order, and Hannah, would you take role, please?
Yes, Councilmember Lombard.
Present.
Councilmember Reyes.
Present.
Councilmember Alcaraz. Okay, Jesus is not here. Councilmember Wenders. Celeste is not here. Councilmember Hardeman.
Present.
Okay, great. And then I am here, and the chair is here.
Thank you so much. All right. So we'll move on to public comment. This is limited to items not appearing on the agenda. So are there items that people would like to comment on that are not appearing on the agenda?
I do see raised hands, Chair Turi. I want to acknowledge that Councilmember Wenders just joined. And just to confirm, how much time would you like to allocate for public comment?
Thank you. Thank, welcome, Celeste. Thanks for being here. We'll do, excuse me, two-minute public comment on items not appearing on the agenda, please.
So we're gonna go with Sonoma TV, and then Josette, and then Mike.
Great, thank you.
Please state your name for the public record and begin your comment. Can you hear us, Sonoma TV? If you can unmute and begin your comment, please. Oh. We're gonna move on to Josette. If you can unmute Josette and begin your comment.
Okay, yeah, Josette Broseicher, 1110 Loma Court, Boys' Hot Springs. I attended the meeting about a Springs Plaza on November 15th. I did not feel that this format truly allowed for community input. There were rules on what could and could not be said, and the idea of breaking into groups for very short time and then reporting back did not work really well. I have seen the same thing, same dynamic in discussions about SDC planning in the valley, and I found this is not a good voice for the community being heard. I would like to know more about why an agreement was drawn up with the Matsons without the community being a party to the meetings leading up to it. I would like to understand what the $2 million that will be lost is about, and why can't this money be used for alternate ideas? And last, why are we not talking about Larson Park, which would be a much more ideal gathering place for our community, and could possibly accommodate some type of community center or youth resource center? And hopefully, this could be done without involving commercial enterprises or concern. This is about community, not-for-profit business. I think I'm gonna go over two minutes, so I'm gonna try to cut this short. I think the Springs Plaza needs to go back to the drawing board with real community meetings, preferably by Zoom, so that everyone can participate, and allowing community members several minutes to speak and share ideas and needs for our community here in the Springs. And last, our post office is truly a community resource, and we can't afford to lose that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Josette. Appreciate the comment. Is it Mike that's next?
Correct. Mike, if you can go ahead and unmute, state your name and begin your comment, please.
Hi, this is actually Mary Sampson on Mike's computer.
All right, Mary.
Can you guys hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Great, great. I wrote these comments earlier, and I'm going to just reiterate them. Sorry, we have two feedback computers going on. Let's see, I think that I, I think I have to talk through yours, though.
Through mine or this?
Yeah, go ahead and unmute one of them, and then speak through the other.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, let me try again.
Yeah.
I'm also calling in regarding the Springs Plaza project that we oppose for the following reasons. One, there has been limited transparency about the actual plan. Two, the plan includes major construction that hasn't been properly vetted to be feasible with that land, including a major parking structure. There are much needed repairs to already existing areas of the Springs community that need to be funded first. The idea that this is a plaza for the community is a wolf in sheep's clothing. It is another investment opportunity for the Matsons. Five, Matsons inability to complete unproceeding properties they have purchased, buildings that have been abandoned or sitting still, do not reflect progress or help this community. Six, Matsons continually purchase properties only to sell shares of them to other LLCs that they own in order to make tax profit. Seven, and last, this county working in any way with Matsons is a poor reflection on equality, inclusion, and human rights due to their hate speech and anti-antigent views. We will continue to advocate against this Springs Plaza proposal. We continue to gather more momentum against it for more residents in this area. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary, for your comments.
Veronica, you can unmute and begin your comments. State your name for the public record, please.
My name is Veronica Annapolis, and I am a past member of the Springs Community Alliance. I object to the proposal of putting a plaza in the Boys' Hot Spring, in the Church Mouse Building. Why the county would co-partner with Matson is beyond anyone's understanding, since they haven't completed any other projects at all. The plaza location is not an ideal place. It's next to traffic, and it also has some, you know, it's not a great location. We have Larson Park, which is undeveloped, and would be an absolute ideal place to have an amphitheater, a meeting place, and all kinds of activities. I really feel very strongly that this is an absolute mistake and a travesty for the community, and I hope that we go on to do better things with our time. Thank you.
Can, Veronica, can you repeat again what you thought the ideal location would be? I missed that. Is she gone?
Veronica. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
We're having some technical issues. I think Larson Park is a seven, is a seven-to-eight acre park that is underutilized, and it could really be the jewel in our crown. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't be looking at developing that into a plaza. And not only that, we have a plaza less than two miles from this location. And having a tiny little plaza that was put out by the Spring-specific committee over six years ago, which needs to be revisited, is not a good idea.
All right, thank you so much for your comment, Veronica. I appreciate it. Okay, do we want to do a final call for public comment, since other people have hopped on? This is the last call for public comment. If there's anyone, we got some new folks. Okay. Hannah, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, it's more of a happening, but this is the only time it would work, I think, in the agenda. So December 10th, we are doing a Creek Park cleanup at Larson Park. It's gonna be December 10th, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There'll be coffee and donuts for people who come by. All supplies will be provided. So I hope everyone can come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, can you specify that we the MAC?
Can you say that again?
She, oh, can you specify who we?
Yeah, sure. It's John Ryan with Community, the County Parks, and the Springs Rotary will be there, but it's not specific, it's not sponsored by the MAC.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Yeah, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our agenda item, which is a Springs Holiday Celebration, and this is being proposed by the Community Voice Ad-Hoc. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mari Hardeman to tell us about what she is proposing.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'm unable to share. My PDF is having technical issues, so it doesn't allow me to share, but based on the request form that I sent to our field representative and to our Chair, Eteri. Oh, it did go through. Thank you. For some reason, when I opened the one that I shared with her, it was blank. I was like, oops. Thank you. So as a member of the Community Voice Ad-Hoc, I am proposing a family-friendly holiday community event, or celebration in this case, that would be titled "The Springs Holiday Celebration 2022", where we providing like hot chocolate, cookies, holiday treats, and also an opportunity to take pictures with a volunteer Santa. I am proposing an estimate of $1,000 for the event. And on how this project will benefit the community, I believe that it would be an event that would bring joy and provide an opportunity for community connectedness and belonging. And we propose working with Sonoma Immigrant Services, our nonprofit partner. Of course, we would have to look for volunteers to join with our ad-hoc to be able to support this event and be able to invite community members. And so this is the proposal. We are looking for also any other ideas that we could take, have take place during this holiday celebration. And I didn't put a time there, but I'm proposing more like if we do, if we do it during the week, if we do something maybe 4:30 to 6:30, or if we did like a Saturday, something earlier, like maybe a 3:00 to 5:00-ish. Thank you.
Well. Do, what are you, have you tried floating any dates? Was that?
Oh, I also did, Karina, can, we did, I did investigate different other holiday celebrations going on, so we could kind of take a, oh, take a informed decision. So the ones in the blank are events that are already happening, having to do with holiday celebrations. So it would give us, Karina, if you wouldn't mind adding maybe 12/17 before the other as a potential date, which is a Saturday. But those are events that to consider, working around. And then those, the red are potential dates.
Sorry, through the chair, just want to clarify, those in reds are dates not available.
Oh, no, thank you.
Back will be substituting for our dear Santa Claus. And those are the dates he is not available, so.
Pardon me, never mind. Sorry, I had done the original, but thank you, Karina, for that. Never mind.
So the dates that are available, based on what I'm seeing, are 8, 10, 11, no, no. Okay, so hold on, there's eight and not, can we take out the? So 10 is available.
The 10 is available.
Let me format this real quick to include dates that could be available. If you guys can address questions in the meantime.
Oh, thank you, Karina.
All right, Joe?
Uh, two things. One, the 17th is Boys' and Girls' Club, our winter wonderland, I believe, from 11 to 2. So 17th, there is something going on for community.
Thank you.
And then the other just suggestion, something where I was trying to do a Boys' and Girls' Club, is make sure that we're incorporating all winter holidays, not just Christmas.
Yep. Yep, very important. Hannah?
You, I guess, I guess we can discuss that. How would you like to see other winter holidays also included, Joe?
I guess it's just.
You have rather.
I guess just depending on the plan of what, you know, if there are activities, or if it's just a gathering, it's just a gathering, just decorations from other things, you know, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, right around the same time. So if there's activities, you know, there's easy Canara art projects, and you know, dreidel and all that kind of good stuff, too. So just putting those thoughts out there.
Okay, thank you, something to consider.
Yeah. Hannah?
Aren't we doing, I thought we were doing a lighting of the fence along with Art Escape, but I'm not 100% up on that. And Jesus isn't here, but my understanding was, am I mistaken? Does anyone know about that?
I believe that is still on the agenda to happen. I don't know what the date is.
We know the date, okay. So I guess I would just put that out. It would be great if we could combine the two.
Do we know the date?
Let me, I'll send him a quick text and see if he can let me know.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was going to be this weekend, which would be too soon to.
I think it might be the fourth.
Together.
Yeah.
Iris?
Where am I? Sorry. If we're using the area that's supposed to be the plaza, would we actually go out in, into that area, block off the parking, so that there's room for giving away, you know, the hot chocolate and the, and the cookies and all that? And, oh, and a place for Santa to be. And a couple of holidays I didn't hear mentioned, actually the solstice. And the other is, I'm pretty sure there's Hanukkah thrown in there. Did I hear Hanukkah, and I missed it? My ears are all stopped. Okay, my ears are stopped up. Thank you.
So those are things to take into consideration, no parking during that time, and having the place blocked off. And making sure that all our, all our celebrations are honored. Okay, Karina, you let us know when you're ready. Are there, and the other question I had. Well, it was answered. Okay, thank you.
So real quick, Art Escape, your other event with Art Escape, the fence decoration is taking place the morning of Thursday, December 8th. And decorations will come down after January 6th. So if you have your event anytime after the 8th, you will have the fence decorated. For the council and community awareness, there might be an encroachment permit required. Supervisor Goran's office, yours truly, will be helping with that permit.
Thank you. Is there a cost to that?
If there are any costs, Supervisor Goran is willing to pay for the fees.
Okay, thank you.
The event.
Thank you.
I think we should, we could reach out to the interface group to see, to invite, invite them with the different celebration for during the holiday, during the winter. What do you all think about that, Joe? Is Joe still there? I don't see him.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh.
Did I hear that the council would like to name this Springs Winter Celebration instead of Holiday Celebration?
I think so. For me, that's what I used to do, because it doesn't, because there are faiths that don't celebrate holidays, so we want to be sure that they're included as well. That's what we used to do at El Verona. We called it a winter celebration. We played bingo. So just to be sure that we included everyone. Celeste?
Yeah, and so I hear that the decoration's gonna be up until the 6th. And when I think also, just in terms of a large portion of our community, we have Three Kings is on the 6th this year, I believe. And then we have Posada, which, you know, I don't know why, if there are plans in the community to be doing that, so having the decorations up and, and having that so that different organizations can still sort of do some of their own celebrations within the Springs with that decor up and participating also in that way.
Three Kings won't be until next year.
I know technically, but the decorations stay up till the 6th, right?
Yeah, yeah.
There, it will be up. Art Escape is aware of that celebration, that holiday celebration, and they will keep the decorations until after January 6th.
Wonderful.
Yeah. So could we, the hardest thing of all of this, we can honor all, everyone is finding a date. I guarantee that's gonna be the most challenging thing that we do here tonight. So does blue mean available? Karina?
Yes, it does. Okay. The black could be available, as long as you don't coincide with the time of the other celebrations.
So we could do the 11th if we were after 3:00 PM?
Correct.
Okay.
That's a Sunday, correct? What time is your event, Joe? At the Boys' and Girls' Club, you said it's from?
I think it's, it's, I think it's like 11 to 2. I think it's, we'll have flyers soon. I'm, I'm not putting it together.
We can't, the 14th is the MAC, so we need to take that off the table. Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. What time is your event?
I believe it's 11 to 2.
Okay, so it's a morning-afternoon thing.
Do we maybe consider doing something on the 18th? It's a Sunday, because we'll have the MAC during the week. So maybe we need some time to rest between the MAC and the events.
The 18th is just about the only day that works for me.
And it's good, because Kids Club has theirs in the evening, so we could do like a 3:00 to 5:00-ish, or 2:00 to 4:00-ish.
Um, Celeste, is your hand up?
Yeah, I was having some of the same thoughts and thinking, sort of, the later date, the better, to give the opportunity to prepare and to do the things on our end. And I was having some of the same thoughts, too, with maybe just what Mari Hardeman had said.
And the weather, it would be less cold. Iris?
Oops, come on. Yeah, I'm not seeing when Fred's available to be Santa. I just have to scroll down a little bit. It was a little lower in the pitch, yeah. And the other thing is, it's getting pretty dark, really, by, you know, by 4:35, and it will be a little more so. You know, who knows, two weeks or so. So I'm thinking that if we can do it at least 3:00 to 5:00, maybe even 2:00 to 5:00.
Just, yeah, 2:00 to 5:00 or 2:00 to 4:00.
Or 2:00 to 4:00, excuse me, yeah, 2:00 to 4:00. Yeah, so that we don't worry so much about people going around in the dark. That's my thought.
Right, that's a good point.
So, can I see? We won't do this emotion. I just want to take a straw vote right now. If we did it on the 18th from 2:00 to 4:00, is that agreeable to most people on the council? I'm seeing heads nod yes. Okay, all right, thank you. Karina, what do you think about, from your perspective, at Supervisor Goran's office?
I would probably be the one attending, and I have no problem with that.
Okay, okay.
So, and I forgot to mention, but I also wanted just to propose also, like, it's a good opportunity to maybe we do like our little survey with like three little questions of what are like the needs in the community? We can have a little box. Yeah, so I think it's a great way to, for, you know, of course, our Community Voice Ad-Hoc, to really engage with the community, to get to know them, to connect, but also to hear, you know, their needs, any feedback. And, and moreover, you know, to invite them to let them know about the MAC meeting.
Iris, did you have another comment?
Actually, well, I'm realizing the 18th is a little scrunchy for me, but I'll have to rearrange things.
I'm sorry. That whole December is scrunchy.
December is scrunchy.
May and December are very scrunchy months. So we need to, we need a motion, one to approve the funding, and one to approve the date. So if we can wrap that up into one, well, do we have to take public comment? Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I just realized that as I looked over at the public. Hannah, did you have something you want to say before I go to public comment?
Yeah, could we look over what the money is for exactly before we vote on it? I didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, well, with the community was, we're thinking definitely, if we could purchase maybe gifts for kids.
Okay, thank you.
So for families, do like little giveaways, or what do you call those, like, holiday? Not giveaways, what's the other word?
Raffles, or?
None, this is not, not raffles, but you know, give them like little treats, you know?
So, yeah, okay, that makes sense, though. I know that we're purchasing, okay. And the gifts for, how many people are we estimating?
So that, that's a good point. So is this something that we need to discuss here? Or would it be with the, with the ad-hoc, Karina?
Not sure.
It's really up to you guys, how, you know, and how much detail you want to go to. Part of the money will be used to get some of the decorations, you know, for your backdrop, to have something beautiful for, if there's a Santa Claus, to have an opportunity to take a picture with a cute background, make it a little festive. It's a great thing that the Art Escape Springs MAC Holiday Decoration will be up in advance, so you'll have that as part of your background for the day. I also want to mention that I had preliminary conversations with the property owner, and they're more than happy to provide electricity for the event. And our office will be looking for a speaker, or if you guys, community members, if anyone knows of someone who just wants to lend a speaker and a microphone, not something too, you know, elaborate, but just something to have some, you know, music going on, kids' music, family songs, what have you. And I do want to mention that the Fairmont actually has offered to provide the hot chocolate and cookies, so they will be providing that. And just a quick reminder, the ad-hoc will need to create, or should create probably, a flyer, bilingual flyer to invite the community.
So we're not gonna get, I don't think we're gonna get into the weeds on all the details. I think we need to leave it to the ad-hoc as we leave other ad-hocs.
Okay. Okay, I just, you know about the gifts thing, okay, then I'd like to.
So let's, so hold on one sec, I've got two more comments from council and then I need to move back to public comment. Is that, I think if I'm reading this screen right, Iris, did you have a comment?
The only thing I wanted to say is that, um, we might be able to borrow the backdrop for Santa from Pet's Lifeline. Because he's, that's, that's, he's doing, um, Santa for Pet's Lifeline also. And we do sort of have a relationship with them.
Fred's busy this season. Um, Joe?
Just real quick on the budget, I'm assuming it's up to $1,000, so if we don't go to $1,000, it's gonna come right back into our cool, that's all, that's all.
Yeah, and if you have any other ideas of what should it be used for, it's better to have the money, like you said, and if whatever's not used, go back.
Um, Hannah, are you up?
No, sorry.
Okay, all right. So I'm gonna go to public comment, then we'll come back and make a motion, see if there's anything we need to include based on public feedback.
Any members of the public who wish to make a comment, please use the raise hand feature. No raised hands.
Okay, I'm counting back from five. I learned that from, um, who does that? Tim, five, four, three, two, one. All right, public comment closed. Um, okay, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to motion that we approve $1,000 for, or up to $1,000 for the Springs Winter Celebration.
Can you name the date?
On December 18th.
The 18th.
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Very exciting. Motion passes unanimously. Um, so the ad hoc, the Community Voice Ad-Hoc has some work to do. We need to set up a couple of meetings, so, um, we need to get cracking on that pretty quick. Let me see, let me check my agenda, make sure I'm not missing anything here. All right, so, um, we, if there's nothing else, I'm asking for an adjournment. Uh, thank you, I want to say thank you to all of you for coming on a Monday night, um, in the middle of a very, very busy season, so thank you all for being here and I hope you all had a restful, got some time with your families. May I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Joe, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Our interpreter wants, is, is ready to adjourn too. All right, um, thank you all, um, for a productive meeting and thank you to the public for being here. We always appreciate you being here and Lynn Marie, thank you for taking notes for us. Have a beautiful evening, everyone. Good night.
Bye, everyone.
Night.